We'll officially begin our meeting. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our July 7th, 2020 Burlington City Council Meeting. Due to the coronavirus pandemic, this meeting is being held via the Zoom platform as posted on the City of Burlington's website. This meeting is streaming live on the City of Burlington's YouTube page at www.youtube.com/COBNC. Please note this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is having technical or connection difficulties, please contact our Public Information Specialist John Vernon at 336-513-5440 for support. For tonight's public hearing and during the public comments, attendance, attendees who wish to address the council, please indicate that you wish to do so by using the raise hand feature in Zoom, or if joining us by phone, it's star nine, and you will be called on at the appropriate time to speak. As a preliminary matter, I am Mayor Ian Balutudis, and I'd like to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on this agenda are present and can hear me. Members present, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mayor Protem Kathy Hikes.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Here.
And then staff participants, when I call on your name, please respond. In the affirmative, City Manager Harden Watkins.
Here.
City Attorney David Huffman.
Here.
Interim City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman.
Here.
Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly.
Here.
Director of Recreation and Parks, Tony Laws.
Here.
Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Here.
Director of Finance and Risk Management, Peggy Reese.
Here.
HR Strategic Initiatives Manager, Greg Grayson.
Here.
Community Engagement Manager, Morgan Lassiter.
Here.
And Public Information Specialist, John Vernon.
Here.
Very good. Thank you, everyone, for confirming your presence. At this time, I'd like to call on Councilmember Harold Owen for tonight's invocation.
Heavenly Father, be with us as we deal with these very unusual times. Give us strength if we face challenges that we've never faced before. Let us work as a group, not only this group itself, but as in our community, to provide the best possible services that we can, to be as kind to as many people as we possibly can. Give good health to many people who are struggling now, not only mental health and physical health both. Again, very unusual times, times that most of us have never seen before, but we trust you and your leadership to get us through this. In your name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. This time, we have a special remembrance for Howie Norwick, a member of our Public Transit Advisory Commission, and I'd like to recognize our Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Sadly, we lost Mr. Norwick on June 11th and have the family in our thoughts and prayers. Mr. Howie Norwick was the first appointed to our Public Transit Advisory Committee in July of 2015. This was a very critical time for Link Transit. The system was developing, and we began service in June of 16, as you all recall. His service in the early stages of Link Transit has allowed it to be a great success over the past four years. Mr. Norwick was very supportive of providing public transportation to all members of our community and was always looking to create partnerships and ways to expand Link Transit beyond its current service areas. Howie understood the benefits that transit provides to our residents on a daily basis and how it can change lives with access, access to jobs and education in our community. Our city family gives our most sincere sympathies and condolences to the family, and we are grateful for his dedicated service to the City of Burlington, Link Transit, and the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Hopefully, everyone got to see that photo from the Link Transit kickoff. And hopefully, we have Heidi Norwick here. We appreciate all the service that their families provided in many different capacities to our community. Heidi, did you want to say any words?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you for all the support that the city has given my family in this very difficult time. Howie did love his service to his community, and you all welcomed him with open arms, and he felt very comfortable and able to voice his opinion, as I'm sure he did, and he was just very glad to be able to give service to the community. So, thank you very much to the council and to the entire city of Burlington. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a report to council from Linda Jones, Alamance Chamber Census Committee Coordinator. I'd like to recognize our Community Engagement, more Engagement Manager, Morgan Lassiter.
Thank you. Good evening. So, tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing and welcoming Ms. Linda Jones. She is going to give us an update on the 2020 Census, but really centered around Alamance County. Ms. Jones' position of the Alamance County Census Campaign Coordinator was created in early 2020, pre-COVID. Although this position may be new to our community, Ms. Jones certainly is not. She has been in public service and an integral part of our community for 20 years. And so, she retired from the Alamance County Health Department of Social Services in the fall of 2019. She was then selected to oversee the Alamance County Census Campaign. Her position is funded through a grant through Impact Alamance, and she works out of the Alamance County Chamber of Commerce. So, we were working with Ms. Jones before COVID hit, and we had vast, wonderful plans of all that we were going to do here in Alamance County to let folks know about the Census. And so, when that hit, those, those plans changed. So, Ms. Jones has been a delight to work with. She has helped keep us focused in the middle of a pandemic, which is no hard task. She has found the community resources here that really would affect change in our county and managed to pull us all together and get information out to the right parts of our community about the Census. So, we, as a city, have had the great pleasure of working with her through this. Her communication strategies have been something to be proud of. I won't steal her thunder. Hopefully, she'll, she'll share some of that with you guys, what we've been able to do here in Alamance County, and also that our response rate is pretty great, above the state average right now, which we're really proud of and, and thankful for. So, tonight is really about hearing from Ms. Jones about the work that she's been doing and thanking her for what she's done for our community. So, welcome, Ms. Jones, and we're excited to hear your update.
Thank you, Morgan. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mayor, and to the entire council for allowing me this opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I'll just start off with a brief update of where we are with our response rate. Nationally, the self-response rate as of the 5th of July was at 61.9%. That means of all the addresses that are known that received an invitation to respond to the Census, 61.9% have responded. That's on a national level. North Carolina has not done quite so well as a state. The state rate is at 58.1%. Unfortunately, that puts us at number 34 out of all 50 states. But we've got some work to do as a state. Alamance County, however, has a response rate of 61.4%, which is pretty close to the national average. That puts us at number 18 in the state of North Carolina, which you know has 100 counties. So, right now, we are holding steady at number 18, and we hope to go up. I looked today to see where Burlington fit into that picture, and the City of Burlington has a response rate of 61.2%, very close to the response rate of the county. And we rank at number 122 out of 551 cities that they have reported. So, Burlington is doing quite well also. I really am grateful for the support from the City of Burlington staff, Morgan, John Vernon, Emily Crowley, and Yasmin Garcia Rico from Cone Health, because they have been my work group, if you will, who have helped to keep me focused and who have helped with technical support and have just provided me with a great work group, if you will, to move this work forward in our community. I have been just well-received by them, and we have formed quite a bond and have supported each other in a variety of ways. Initially, before COVID, I had anticipated being at every event in the community, speaking, doing, speaking engagements. That's what we thought we would be doing, but of course, as you know, that can't happen now. So, we've had to turn to other methods of how to reach out to our community. And so, that work has included things like purchasing ads on billboards, purchasing newspaper ads, purchasing ads on four major radio stations, all with unique listening audiences, doing interviews on the radio stations that will allow that. I participated in a virtual resource fair for Alamance Elder Care. I participated in the Fourth of July drive-through event that the City of Burlington sponsored, where we reached probably well over 500 families who drove through to pick up activity kits, which was great. There have been social media posts, including a video that City of Burlington staff filmed one for me and posted it, and another was filmed by Impact Alamance. We've been at food distribution events, talking to people while they wait in line to receive food during this really stressful time. And we really are just so grateful for the response from the community in general. We've had a very positive response, even in the food distribution lines, where you know people are stressed and, and very worried. It's still been a very positive response from our citizens and residents. And so, I just want to thank the City of Burlington for your support of the Census efforts and to wanted to let you know that our efforts continue. While they may be a bit different from what we originally planned, efforts continue, and we will be out and about at any event possible, and also reaching out in many other ways to ensure that we complete our count as best we can in Alamance County and the City of Burlington. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate you joining us and filling us in. Obviously, there's still some, some distance to go to try to.
Yes.
Match our numbers from last census.
Yes.
You're, you're difficult and hard work.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, when is the deadline?
Well, it has changed. Originally, the deadline was July 31st, but the Census Bureau has been updating us consistently due to COVID. It will be October 31st now. Anyone who has not responded to the Census can expect to start seeing the Census enumerators out in the community starting August the 11th, but the portal for self-response will remain open and will be open until October 31st.
Morgan, what, what are we going to do here in the last three-month stretch drive here? Because this is an important thing for us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we have a lot to gain as a city and a county and a state through this Census. So, there, there are still efforts. We meet with Ms. Jones in our kind of small work group that she's referring to about every other week. So, our last drive will be really centered around a lot of similar stuff that we've been doing, going out to these food drives in the community that are reaching thousands of folks. And Ms. Jones and John and Emily and Yasmin and I have been out there handing out and talking to folks. And so, we'll continue to do those efforts. And we've got really good community partners that are going to even help us get into these lower response rate areas that we know about. With the need for a mask in our community, we're really looking forward to joining those two efforts as well. So, we're looking for those connection points where we're out in the communities that we need to make sure are hearing about our messages.
And we will also have a Census presence at the upcoming COVID testing events that will be going on in the community. We're making plans to be there to speak to people while they're waiting in line to be tested.
Any other questions from council? All right, Linda, thanks again for joining us.
Thank you so much.
All right, next on our agenda, we recognize our interim City Clerk, Beverly Smith.
Good evening, everyone. Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items. Thank you.
All right, next is the adoption of the agenda. Before council is the agenda with its additions, do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve made by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. There's one item, Item A, to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Burlington and Guilford County to provide interim emergency management services for an approximate 90-day period and authorize the City Manager and Director of Finance and Risk Management to execute the agreement upon satisfactory completion of legal review and city attorney approval. At this time, I'll ask for a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
Make the motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve consent agenda made by Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Protem Hikes. Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next on our agenda, we have one item of unfinished business. City Council will consider appointments to the 2020-2021 Advisory Boards and Commissions. This is continued from the June 16th, 2020 City Council meeting. At this time, we'll have a continued discussion regarding those. I believe at this time, council is amenable to approval on those, but we will go through them one commission at a time. Any objection from council to proceed?
As you go through each one individually, are you going to name the people that, that are up for appointment?
Yep, I will list the reappointments and the appointments and any alternate or other related notes. And this generally mirrors the, the consensus memo that was sent out earlier to council members. But we do have one addition, as we'll get to, on the Transportation Advisory Committee, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting due to the passing of Howie Norwick. All right, first on our Boards and Commissions, we'll do the ABC Board. We have one reappointment to this board. The reappointment is for Frank Longest for a term that will expire June 30th, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve this reappointment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion to approve by Councilmember Owen, seconded by Mayor Protem Hikes. Any questions or comments on this motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion is approved with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next on the agenda is the Airport Authority with a reappointment of Mark Christman for a term that expires December 31st, 2024. At this time, I'll call for a motion to approve this reappointment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions or comments on this motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion is approved with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the Burlington Housing Authority with two reappointments, Lee Snapp for a term that expires June 30th, 2023, and Charles Carter for a term that expires June 30th, 2023. Two new appointments. First is Michael Graves for a term that expires June 30th, 2023, and second is Dorothy Yarborough for a term that expires June 30th, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve those appointments and reappointments?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve is from Councilmember Ward, motion seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions or comments on this? I will state that I believe we're missing an opportunity to fulfill the goal of these boards and commissions here. I think these are a tremendous opportunity to elevate new leadership to help serve our community, and especially as we've seen a full slate of new talented individuals stepping up to serve. I would like to see other names proposed here.
No, in, in addition to that comment, Mayor, I think it should be duly noted that Dorothy Yarborough and Michael Graves both are certified, CEU certified through the NAHRO. So, a lot of, a lot of knowledge going to be gained there as well.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments or questions on this motion?
I, I'd like to make an additional comment. I think both of those nominees have served the Housing Commission earlier, and I think they have a wealth of experience, and they're certainly interested in the community. And I think, I think, I don't know, I think they'll do, do a great job on the housing.
Thank you for those comments. Any additional comments on this? All right, we'll call for a motion. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has passed with votes from Councilmembers Owen, Ward, and Butler, votes against from myself and Mayor Protem Hikes. Next, we have our Board of Adjustment with a reappointment of H.E. Wilson for a term that expires June 30th, 2023, and an alternate appointment for Eric Grant with a term that expires June 30th, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve these appointments and reappointments?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions or comments regarding these? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler, Owen. Next is our Historic Preservation Commission. We have one new appointment here, Drew Neal for a term that expires June 30th, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve this new appointment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve from Mayor Protem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions or comments on this motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is our Minimum Housing Commission. We have three new appointments here. First is a full appointment for Lucero Vazquez for a term that ends June 30th, 2023, and two alternate appointments. First is Kenneth Graves for a term that expires June 30th, 2022, and Jacob Dunson for a term expiring June 30th, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve these appointments?
So moved. Second.
Is that second from Harold?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve from Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Any questions or comments regarding this motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. This motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is Planning and Zoning Commission. We have one reappointment of James Kirkpatrick for a term that expires June 30th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve this reappointment?
So moved.
I'm going to give Butler that a motion and Councilmember Owen the second. Any questions regarding this motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is the Recreation and Parks Commission with the reappointments of Chris Honeycutt for a term expiring June 30th, 2023, and Thomas Phelps for a term expiring June 30th, 2023. We have two new appointments, CeeLo Fawcett for a term ending June 30th, 2023, and Tripp Durham for a term ending June 30th, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve these reappointments and appointments?
So moved. Second.
That to Owen, Councilmember Owen as the motion, and Councilmember Butler for the second. I heard you.
That was Bob.
I, I think I made the second, but we won't argue about it.
Yeah.
You can split it up.
I appreciate it. All right. Any questions regarding the motion or comments? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem, Kathy Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is Traffic Commission. We have three new appointments for this. First appointment is Ann Davis for a term expiring June 30th, 2023, Ashley Paste for a term entering June 30th, 2023, and James Perry for a term ending June 30th, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve these new appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve from Mayor Protem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions or comments on this motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is our Tree and Appearance Commission. We have two reappointments. Walt Brown to a term that expires June 30th, 2023, and Roger Moore to a term expiring June 30th, 2023, and two new appointments, Pat Pelt to a term that expires June 30th, 2023, and Chuck Beard to a term expiring June 30th, 2022. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve these appointments and reappointments.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Here to approve from Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Protem Hikes. Any questions or comments regarding this motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next is our Public Transportation Advisory Commission. We have two reappointments. First is Moses Corbett with a, for a term that expires June 30th, 2023, and Roger Meisenbach for a term that expires June 30th, 2023. We have three new appointments. The first is Shaheer Said for a term ending June 30th, 2021, and then we have Butch Wilson to an alternate position expiring June 30th, 2021. And then we have, Mike, you may need to back me up on the expiration of this term, but the vacancy from Mr. Norwick will be appointing Tammy Williamson. I don't have the expiration in front of me on that one, but we will make sure it's included in the minutes. So, those five appointments. Do I hear a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember War, Owen, seconded by Councilmember Butler. Any questions or comments on this motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, and Owen. Last is our Library Committee with one reappointment of Logan Savitz to a term ending September 30th, 2023. Do I hear a motion to approve this reappointment?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve from Mayor Protem Hikes, seconded by Councilmember Ward. Any questions or comments regarding this reappointment motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has passed with votes from myself, Mayor Protem Hikes, and council members Ward, Butler, Owen. Thank you, everyone, and a huge thank you to everyone who applied. As I mentioned earlier, we have had a general increase in the last few years of folks applying. We do appreciate folks stepping up to lead in our community, and boards and commissions are a great way to get involved and apply your skills and leadership to our community. So, we commend everyone who currently serves, and we look forward to the, the new service of those stepping up now. So, congratulations to everyone. Thank you to council members. It's a lot of applications to wade through.
Mayor, if I could, I want to point out that what a nice job John Vernon did with this. This is no easy task, and I think he did an admirable job with this process. So, thank you, John.
Yes, thank you, John. Someday, we'll figure out an easier spreadsheet to try to navigate all these applicants, but that does not mean we need less people to apply. We want to see more folks apply. So, we really appreciate everyone who put in an application. I will state that those applications are always open. You can apply online, because we do have vacancies come up throughout the year as folks move or for other reasons. So, if you are ever interested in applying, there's more information for our boards and commissions on the city's website. Simply search Boards and Commissions. So, all right, next, we have a public hearing scheduled this evening. Item two on our agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider approving a lease agreement between the City of Burlington and Lifespan Incorporated for Fairchild Community Centers Daycare. This time, I'll recognize Assistant City Manager Rachel Kelly. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got Tony Laws here with me as well tonight to, to ask you for consideration after a public hearing of approving a contract with Lifespan Incorporated to operate the daycare center located at Fairchild Community Center. We've come to you several times before to discuss this ongoing process. The first time back in February to let council know that our hope was to go out to RFPs to transition from a in-house, city-run daycare program at Fairchild to having a third party operate a high-quality daycare center in the Fairchild facility that the city owns and did operate. Council gave us the, the go-ahead to go Council gave us the go-ahead to go forward with that, and we did issue an RFP on February 14. We had four qualified respondents, and after evaluation, the committee found that Lifespan Incorporated was our most qualified respondent to provide daycare services there at the Fairchild location. This evening, we've got Ms. Lynn Crabtree, who is the Senior Director of Educational Services for Lifespan Incorporated. She's here to tell you a little bit about Lifespan. They've been in our community for quite some time and have been operating five-star daycare programs in North Carolina. They do good work. Like I said, they had a very strong application that the Evaluation Committee felt good about and would look forward to awarding a contract to them to operate a program at Fairchild if council sees fit to do so. So if you don't mind, I'll introduce Ms. Lynn Crabtree, the Senior Director of Educational Services, to tell you a little bit more about Lifespan.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us come and speak to you guys tonight. Yes, we're excited about the possibility of expanding our services in the Burlington community, the Almonds County community. Our program is at 919 Stokes Street, and we've been there since the mid-'70s. The building was originally, or the program was originally called Happy Time, so some of you may remember that. And it was basically there to serve school-aged children that had developmental disabilities because they couldn't yet go to public school. It then evolved into a preschool program for children with developmental disabilities. It was part of the local mental health program. And in 2005, all mental health services across the state got contracted out, and Lifespan got the contract. So we've been operating the program since 2005. We're now an inclusive childcare program, which means we serve children ages six weeks to 12 years, some of which have developmental disabilities and some are what we call typically developing. If there is such a thing, it's a typically developing child. And recently, we added a class for children that have experienced trauma, and we're hoping to be able to expand that program. We have a variety of fundings with our program. We have Department of Social Services funding. We have a contract with the Almonds Burlington School System. We get some money from Cardinal Innovations, and we also have N C Pre-K slots. And that's the program that we would like to expand and take to Fairchild or our children that are funded through the N C Pre-K program, so they would be four-year-olds. We're sort of in an ever-changing environment, just like everybody is, and it may be, depending on what happens with the school system, if children go stagger days, we also may serve some school-aged children at that facility. So we're just kind of waiting to see what's going to happen. But we're really excited. Rachel's been great. She's been great to work with, and we're really excited about being able to expand our services. We're a five-star center, and in addition to that, we're also a certified developmental day, which means we serve children that have special needs. So I don't know, did I cover it? Melissa Shannon, our program director, is here. Did I cover everything? Yes, okay.
Thank you, Lynn. I will also, I'd like to point out, just because we've discussed it previously, the Fairchild Center was updated with C D B G funding. We worked with our community development division to make sure that in the RFP and the response that Lifespan provided will meet the qualifications necessary for C D B G, serving Burlington residents and serving the correct amount of low-to-moderate-income families to comply with the C D B G regulations. So I did want to make sure we addressed that since it came up in the work session in February when we discussed it.
And we also have worked closely, some of the staff that were already employed there, they've actually called in Melissa, so we're working to see if we can give some of those staff employment. And some of the children that were there, they were paying a much lesser rate than most daycare programs, and we're going to give them a lesser rate than we're charging our other families. It's going to be a little bit of an increase, but we'll provide food for them, and they were bringing their own food. So we're trying really hard to kind of bridge the gap.
Do you want to elaborate a little more on the low-to-moderate-income vetting process? I know that was a concern that council members had.
Right. Well, if we do N C Pre-K slots, that's one of the criteria. So it'll kind of be, kind of be met, but we serve a lot of children now that meet that criteria. Yeah, 75% of our children who are old meet that, meet those qualifications.
So did I understand you to say, Lynn, that you would just be serving four-year-olds at Fairchild?
Well, if we just do N C Pre-K, but we're probably going to not have enough N C Pre-K slots to fill up both classes, so we possibly would use three, have three-year-olds there too. And there's a possibility we'd have school-aged children there, depending on what happens with the school. And where I think we're planning on operating an after-school program anyway. So whether it would be there or at our other site, we still haven't. We need to wait to see what's happening with the schools.
And the after-school would be children with disabilities because there's a very big gap on serving children with disabilities in an after-school program.
There is none, actually. Yeah.
Very good. Other comments you wanted to make or any questions from council members before we begin the public hearing? I will note that any questions that come up during the hearing, we will allow you all a chance to respond or answer those. Usually council members prefer that. So those will have time after all the public hearing comments are heard. Very good. We'll begin our public hearing. So at this time, we will open the public hearing to allow public comments. If you do choose to comment, we ask that you state your name and address for the public record. And this time, I'm going to turn to our meeting host and John Vernon to see if we have any comments in. We also provided an email address in advance to this meeting, and so folks could provide an email in advance, so those comments could be read into the record. Beverly, do we have any of those requests?
We have not received any emails for the public hearing for coming up.
Okay.
At this time.
All right. Again, if you do wish to make a comment through the Zoom app, you can use the raise hand feature, or if you are joining us by phone, it's star nine. Looks like we have no indicated comments at this time. Just another moment. All right. Do I hear a motion from council to close public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Motion to close public hearing from Councilmember Ward, seconded by Councilmember Owen. Do I, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Next, do I have a motion to approve the lease agreement between the City of Burlington and Lifespan Incorporated for the Fairchild Community Center Daycare?
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the lease between the City of Burlington and Lifespan Incorporated for the Fairchild Community Center Daycare Program.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Owen, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes. Do I hear any discussion on this? Any further questions for the Lifespan team?
It just sounds like they've answered a lot of the objections that there were. Must have taken a lot of negotiation, and I appreciate that. I'm sure parents do as well.
We wish you well.
Thank you so much. We're looking forward to it. We're excited.
Yeah, Lifespan's done wonderful work in this community for a really long time. So I'm happy to see that you're going to be the one doing this.
Great. Thanks so much.
Yes, thank you. I've enjoyed touring your facility before, and anything like your current facility, we have high hopes for what you bring to Fairchild Community Center. So without further ado, no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. Thank you, Lynn, and your team. We appreciate you being here. Thank you, Rachel, for your work on this. We know there's a lot of community relations and working with our parents and families in the community. So thank you all.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next on our agenda, we have an item of new business. Item three, City Council will consider setting a date of public hearing for July 21st, 2020 to seek public input on a proposed installment financing pursuant to N C G S 160A-20G. And this time, I'll recognize Director of Finance and Risk Management, Peggy Reese. Welcome, Peggy.
Council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. Before you is a request to set a date of public hearing for the installment financing that we discussed last night. And at the risk of hopefully not boring you, but for the benefit of the public, I will briefly review what we presented last night. With the building of a new building for the carousel and the expense of that and council's concerns about spending a fund balance, we investigated the opportunity to maybe finance this carousel building over a number of years, which would then be paid for by citizens who are actually using the facilities over those same years. And since there are certain fixed costs going, we're going through the financing process, we thought we would, staff would look and see if there was anything else that we wanted to recommend being included in this financing. The first that came to mind is the restoration to include, the first that came to mind is to include the restoration of the carousel itself in the financing. Next, we always do a three-year capital lease financing for the equipment for the coming year, so we thought it would make sense to combine that with this financing. And lastly, staff looked at some items that are in dire need of being done, but just didn't make the budget cut. An example are the poles at Fairchild. They are rotting HVAC system for Fire Station One, the retaining wall and driveway at Fire Station Two. These are some things that really need to be done and will have to be done, and we thought it would be good and good to include them. So before you tonight is, we're asking that you set a date of public hearing for July 21st to get public comments on this financing, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You're good. Thank you, Peggy. Any questions from council on this item? All right. A full detailed list of those public financing items are available. We discussed them in our work session yesterday, and they will be discussed further in that public hearing. Do I hear a motion to approve this public hearing date?
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilmember Butler, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Hikes to set a date of public hearing for July 21st, 2020. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye and indicate with a hand raise.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed with votes for myself, Mayor Pro Tem Hikes, and Councilmembers Ward, Butler, and Owen. That concludes our regular agenda items. At this time, we will resume our public comment period. Public comments may be emailed to publiccomments@burlingtonnc.gov, and we have accepted those up until 5:00 PM today. So there's also information online regarding how to issue public comments and join us through the Zoom link. And then there's also dial-in information online as well. So at this time, we'll call in public comments. If anyone in attendance would like to speak during this phase, we ask that you use the raise hand feature in Zoom or the star nine if you're joining us by phone, and then we'll invite you to speak. Please indicate your name and address before speaking, and we will be keeping folks to the pre-agreed upon three-minute limit. And I'll let you know when your time is up. So do we have, we have, looks like our first comment will come from Donna Van Hook.
Good evening. My name is Donna Van Hook. I live at 317 Castle Street in Burlington. And my public comment is about a letter that I received from the city manager, Mr. Harden Watkins, dated July 1st, 2020. Also, I want to read what the public comment is about. I would like to file a complaint against Mr. Harden Watkins about a statement he made in the letter on July 1st. I filed a complaint against the police chief on October 20th via email, and in it, I stated that he was trying to control and intimidate both my activism and speech in Burlington communities through his position of chief police. Please advise how I should proceed with a complaint process. And I filed that with city manager Harden Watkins. Over the months, we have talked, and he sent me this letter on July 1st stating that, at the end, furthermore, I appreciate that you have and had not prior to your October 18, 2019 complaint, a desire and go to organize and lead a citizens' review board to oversee the activities of the Burlington Police Department. However, your continued utilization of this accusation against the police, chief of police, to advance your goal of establishing such a board is not proper. There is no nexus between these two issues. So it sounds to me like he's saying I'm making a frivolous claim against the police chief, and there's no findings, he says, because he's closed the case and said that the Human Resources Director, Jamie Joyner, also investigated and found the same thing that he did. However, there are a lot of documents in between October 20th and this letter. So yes, I would like to file a complaint, which I would do in writing on tomorrow, against the city manager, Mr. Harden Watkins, by him stating that I have ulterior motives for filing a complaint against the chief. That is my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. This time, we'll open the floor for the next comment. I'm waiting for, again, if you wish to use the Zoom, it's the raise hand feature or star nine on your phone, and our hosts or folks will get you moved in. Just another moment. If anyone is having technical difficulties, they can contact John Vernon at 336-513-5440. All right. It does look like we have an additional public comment. At this time, I'll recognize Michael Graves and remind that we, please state your name, address, and we have a three-minute time limit. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Michael Graves, 210 Union Avenue. I'd just like to address the council. First, I want to thank the council members that voted for me to be back on BHA. I will not let you down for your vote. Also, Ms. Beverly Smith, I called her today, and she helped me in another issue, so I want to thank her, the interim clerk. What I'm calling is Harden, though, we had a meeting at his office concerning the public, I mean, police reform. That meeting was followed up with a press conference at the sheriff's office. It has gotten very positive reviews from the public, especially the action by BPD, which was to write in the policy of no chokeholds. Now, I want to follow up that meeting with a request for a police review board. We discussed this in the meeting with Harden and the police chief and all the other police chiefs in the sheriff. All the law enforcement is on board with that. My review board is not to control the police departments. It is simply to review certain facts and certain issues and then make a recommendation. It is up to the council of each city, because we want this to be city and county-wide, I mean, excuse me, county-wide, and a representative from each city to be on that board. Again, all police chiefs are in the sheriff in favor of this. I would hope to get the Burlington City Council in favor of this as well. But this, the police review board is being used throughout the country. And again, it's not a board to run law enforcement. You have a chief to do that. That's not what we're trying to do. One of the things that we really want to make sure that this board is able to do is to review complaints. And again, once we get those complaints, or once the board gets those complaints, we make a recommendation to each and every council. And the reason for that is we don't want somebody to get fired from BPD to go get a job at Gibsonville or at the Sheriff's Department. We want to make sure that the council is well aware of whatever complaint has been made about a certain officer. And again, I want to point out again, the board, the review board, is not to run the agency, the law enforcement. And again, I want to point out again, the board, the review board is not to run the agency, the law enforcement agency. It is simply a review board to make recommendations. And I think that will give a lot of confidence to the citizens in the county of Alamance and the citizens of each city. And I hope we can get your support on that. I know we have another meeting with, excuse me, with Harden Thursday, with all the city managers, and we will be pushing that as well as other issues. Thank Harden for, excuse me, the city manager for being a partner in this. And I thank the chief Smythe for being a partner in this as well. So that's my spiel for the night. Thank you very much, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Appreciate those comments. All right, we'll pause for just a moment, see if we have any additional public comment. Again, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or star nine if you are joining us by phone.
Mayor, I believe we have in attendance Fran Edwards, who emailed earlier today that public comments would be made at this meeting. And I'm not certain if there's some technical difficulties, but that person is in attendance tonight.
Fran Edwards, if you would like to speak at this time, please use the raise hand feature or star nine. And see if we can bring Fran online. Fran, are you with us? All right, it looks like we've lost a connection. Beverly, do you have a? We might have her. Fran, can you?
Yeah, I think we've got her now.
Fran, if you'd like to unmute yourself, our host will unmute you and.
Hello?
There you are. Excellent. If you could state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes for your comment.
All righty. Thank you so much, John Vernon, for assisting me. This is my first time using Zoom. I grew up here. My name is Fran Edwards. I'm from the Tate family. Grew, I grew up in Morgantown. And I spent most of my time in New York as a professional educator. And recently, two years ago, actually, I retired. And I've been watching the news, reading books and writing. And one of the things that's been very strongly on my mind is what I see on the news in regards to systemic racism. So I sat down, I love this town. I sat down and just thought about my days as a young child. And I've written a book called My Black South that depicts some of my, has vignettes about my growing up in the South. And those were some really good times and there were some times that were not so good. But after looking at the news over and over, there were times that I wanted to look at and just reflect on what our town, our city and our county has to offer in terms of where we stand in regards to systemic, systemic racism. So I look at the housing, I look at the health, I looked at the schools, I looked at the criminal justice system of policing, the courts, the employment, resources, religious institutions and governmental, government and politics. Now, I sent to Ms. Smith an email with really, you know, questions regarding systemic racism here. I have no answers, but I did have questions. So I don't know if I have the time to do this, but you said three minutes. I think this is going to take about four minutes, if that's okay.
Well, I will say, if you do have specific questions that you'd like answered to, our policy is generally not to provide responses during the public comment period.
All right. So the, I'll just try to ask some questions. In terms of the housing, I had some strong comments, but one of them is why do we have a lot of segregated communities? Is it caused by redlining and germinating or is it just plain politics? I'm not sure exactly what, what's caused by. We have communities like Morgantown, Maritown, Green Level, Green, Glen Raven and other places that are quite segregated. And one of the things that we mentioned, someone mentioned to me, why is it that in those kind of communities, our communities like that, they, the resources are just not there. For example, in terms of health, there are no dentists or doctors in the neighborhood. We were just concerned about that. There are not many, there are no drugstores. There are no grocery stores with fresh produce. In terms of criminal justice, we want to just look at, I think some of it has come up now with what I think Mr. Graves has just mentioned in terms of policing in, in our communities, in the communities, the black communities and people of color communities. In terms of resources, I'll just mention this a little bit because what I had written down, I'm not able to be able to say. One of the things we would always hear is why is it that when it snows, the streets are not clean to the three or four days later than the non-white communities? I mean, they were, I'm sorry, the non-white communities had their streets cleaned and cleared at least three or four days after the white communities. So bottom line is, in seeing a lot of people now speaking in terms of systemic racism, I'm just wondering, and this is a question to everyone that's listening, not to the council, but to everyone. Do we have, are we playing a part in systemic racism here? If we look at our schools, do we, our teachers reflect our population? If we look at our, our council right here, does it reflect our population? I mean, these are some things I think we really need to think about. And, and I think if we all were to address some of the questions that, you know, if I had more time to share more of the questions, but if we could address these questions, I do believe that we would have a better united community, you know? As I said, I live here and I'm very happy to live here. This is where I was born. I love this community, but there are some things that are not actually benefiting the black communities. I happen to live at 412 Nice Drive, which is a diverse community, but I grew up in Morgantown. I still have family in Morgantown. So those are the concerns that I have. I'm sorry that I'm not able to methodically give you the questions that I had, but I will send those questions to the council members and to our mayor and our mayor pro temp. And maybe you can consider some of those questions and maybe look at those. And perhaps somewhere down the line, come back to our community and sort of address some of those things in terms of all the things that I've mentioned. So I thank you for allowing me this time. It was not presented to the way I wanted to present it, but as I say, I will, I'll send that information to you. And hopefully you can address that, those questions that I have later on. Thanks very much.
Thank you Fran. Yes, if you provide those to interim city clerk Smith, she can make sure that all council members get a copy of that. All right, it looks like that concludes our public comment. I don't see any other indication that we have folks on Zoom or on the phone to comment. So we will wrap up. At this time, we'll move on to council comments. Any comments from council this evening?
Mayor, I have one thing that I do want to address. You know, I think on, on Monday, June 29th, you called me, I guess it was about 9:30 and you may have called the rest of the council too. I couldn't take the call. I was in a meeting. I stepped out and called you back. And then you, of course, notified me that you planned on having a press conference and subsequently endorsed a petition demanding the removal of the, the statue of Court Square and Graham. And I urged you to reconsider. I urged you to reconsider because I thought your actions were a little deceitful in the eyes of the public and that it would be divisive with our other elected bodies. If you present yourself as a mayor of Burlington and sign a petition as a mayor of Burlington, it gives the impression that those actions are endorsed by city council and that, that concern. I believe it's important to note and, and to put on record that your actions were not endorsed by city council. And furthermore, I, I do believe it to be in direct conflict with a council manager form of government. Whereas the mayor does not have the authority to represent council without a resolution giving such authority. There is no resolution, nor has there been any council discussions about that matter. You stated to me that you were going to proceed and that if I had issues with it, that you and I could take them up with city man, city attorney, David Huffman, which I think we should. I attempted to, to reason with you that it was just not our decision, that the city of Burlington did not have the decisive authority to get involved in, in that matter. And, and that the, the statute in question is protected under state and federal law. We certainly have no authority over that. You know, I asked why, why are you, why are you doing this? And you said that you'd been approached by Elon University and by Cone Health and urged you to get involved in order to perpetuate public health, safety and the well-being of, of our citizens. Well, they didn't approach us. They didn't approach me anyway. They may approach other council members, but I would certainly find it respectful that if there is an issue like that, it is so powerful that our financial or a educational institution or our healthcare system needs to get involved, that they could have collaborative conversations with everyone. And, and I've had none personally. But to contact all of us just minutes prior to having this press conference, in my opinion, shows just a blatant lack of leadership. It demonstrates that you got no desire, you have no desire to collaborate. But rather you wanted to attempt to use your political position to, to maybe ambush our, our county commissioners or something. I'm not sure. It just showed a lack of respect for, I think, the office they hold. And I would be remiss if I didn't state such. I've received multiple emails, multiple phone calls asking why Burlington City Council was involved in this. And simply put, for the record, we are not. You know, there was an African-American leader that sent an email to me, I may have sent it to other council members. His quote was, I think your letter and press conference may have done more harm in our community than it could have done good. He chastised you in the, in the email for ambushing those and not sitting down with all parties and creating a collaborative solution. And that the letter deprived them, the other elected bodies, the opportunity to work with you to accomplish this goal. And I think everyone would love to sit down and talk about a collaborative way to get to a amiable resolve. As far as the coalition, we had another person that emailed, and I think it should be of record that this person thought the leaders coalition was deceitful in and of its own. That this person further stated that people are not in elected position, most of them are not in elected positions. Therefore, they should not represent themselves as leaders and voices in our community. Their role in that capacity merely, is merely that of any other citizen in the county. So you know, those comments are important. Those, I assume those were emailed to everyone also. But just for clarity, we have, we do have a council manager form of government. We're constructively nonpartisan, purposely constructively nonpartisan. Our mayor's figurehead and our charter says he or she has no authority to represent council unless duly empowered to do so through a resolution. I believe that you allowed yourself to become some pawn of partisan politics somehow or another in this. And furthermore, it's in an arena that we have no authority in, nor should be interfering. So to our county commissioners, I want to apologize to them, to the, to the grand elected body, I'd like to apologize to them. I believe moving forward, that any actions such as this should be briefed well in advance for council discussion if need be. Otherwise, I think it should just be stated that it's a personal involvement and, and not through our, perceived through our elected body.
Thank you. All right, do I hear any other council comments? Right, do I hear a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you everyone for joining us this evening. Have a wonderful rest of your week and please be safe out there.